All right.
All right, I think we're close enough. You ready to go, Cal? All right, I'll open the meeting. I think we've got department heads. Chief Demas, you've got training tonight, so don't you lead us off?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Starting from the top, two hundred and forty-eight incidents to date, noteworthy incidents in the last month. It was an extremely active month. A couple of days ago, we were in ninety-three North in Northfield for three hours, brush fire, multiple brush fires along the side of the road. We're helping them, who went to Franklin four times in the past month, two structure fires and two brush fires. They had a busy month. The search, two weeks ago on Borough Road, ended up very well. We were concerned because we were running out of daylight and due to the circumstances, if that person spent the night in the woods, she probably would not have survived. I was a little late getting to the scene. I wasn't on that day. I came in, I was available. Chief Cardy was there from the beginning, communicated with him. We already had the resources coming in. We had, and I'll let him talk about his angle, but on my end, I had fire. We had fishing game. We had multiple dogs, so we had a drone in the air, a drone on the way. Several UTVs and a remote incident command post from Loudon that came in. We're using high-tech, meaning that we're pinging our searchers that were in the woods on foot. I was able to hop on somebody's hotspot that was up there, because the cell service is not that good up there. So I was able to hop on somebody's hotspot and we had our tablet and I could see where all the rescuers were. And most importantly, once the family, a family member familiar with the area is the one that actually located her, while I had other searchers in the woods, and I was able to see her location. We got mobile apparatus, UTVs down to her and helped her out of the woods and her dog at about four thirty, probably about two hours before it got dark.
Great.
So we weren't leaving whether it got dark or not, but we're, you know, we're very concerned with nightfall, because she had already been out there for five, six hours. So.
We can hardly thank you all enough for the effort to do bring that person and dog safely home.
Yeah, well, that, from the fireside, that's what we do. And I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of Cal and Sam. We were talking with them via text and they were managing social media posts from the town. And because we had a boatload of people that wanted to come out and search, and we were going to use that option, you know, in the next hour or so, but we had about twenty searchers in the woods that ended up finding them and we never needed that. But we didn't have time to post on social media any time and Sam and Cal reached out and thank you both. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Really, a group effort all the way around. Such a good ending. Thank you.
On the Hampshire Motor Speedway event this weekend, we sent a detail there, Friday's out of the end, Sunday. Fairly uneventful.
Yay.
We had a major accident on one oh six last week. You had to use a Jaws of Life to get a critical patient out. Don't know her status, but thank goodness, we have that equipment. We've been on ninety-three, including today, I think five times this month, two or a couple of extracations with the jaws of life. So we've been, we've been fairly active on the highway. And last week, we had that carbon dioxide incident on Puffer. If the people didn't call and didn't get out of the house, then what does it come to CO? The CO levels were that high.
Wow.
I can't encourage enough people to have work and smoke and CO detectors in their house, and if they're going off, give us, give us a call so we can help mitigate the situation. That's our month. It's a busy month.
Busy month.
So Fire Prevention Week is coming up in next month. We've got a hundred twenty-five children coming on ten fifteen in three groups. We're going to do a demo for them. They enjoy that. They look forward to that every year. We give them some pub ed materials and it goes off pretty well. So. And their annual inspection for the elementary school is scheduled in October as well. There's a burn ban. A proclamation was signed by the governor effective today that no outside materials. It even talks about smoking in the woods. They can't be done. I don't know how you enforce that, but I'm going to ask Cal to put this up in Town Hall if you could. And then, so basically, these are the signs. If you have a public place that you know of, library. Obviously, Rachel here, Rachel coming in, which she should be. Library of the.
Canterbury Store?
Yeah, the.
I'll take one for the store.
Okay, so perfect.
Yeah, yeah, give us a stack. Thank you. And actually, I had to remind somebody about these today because somebody was not thinking and started burning things and.
So I just want to go on record, if you see, if you go driving down the street or you see somebody, just call nine oh one and report it. You will remain anonymous.
Yeah.
And we try, we'd like to enforce through education. We're not going there and writing tickets.
Right.
If I go to your house twice in two days and after I told you not to burn, I'll, I'll be able to take it the second time. But we'd like to enforce through education and talk people and tell them what's right and what's wrong. So. But you will remain anonymous.
It's good to know.
Membership, still seeking new members. And projects, Picard Road Hydrant, according to DES, a non-viable site. So we, that project is off the table and dead, and we're looking at a new possible site on Scale's Road near New Room. To access water for that part of town. We're working with other departments because all of our, all of our water sources in town are dry. If we need additional water, it's not available. So we're doing, we're preempting this, you know, a possible fire by getting tankers rolling earlier, you know, this will move rather than later. All departments are. So lots go into them and then come to us. So that's all we can do.
We still have enough in the fire pond up here behind Sam Lake?
Yeah, it's getting low, but yeah.
Is there a point where you can't draw water from it?
Oh, basically, like at the golf course, the intake for the dry hydrant, the water level is below.
Oh, yeah, that's tough. Okay.
Service and inspection month for all the vehicles. It's usually a costly month, but we're managing that within budget. I went down to Massachusetts last week to visit the people that are building our fire truck. I got some positive updates on the fire truck. It's from the delivery date. It's been anticipated move to July, from July twenty-sixth to May of twenty-sixth. So that's a good thing. The Loudon project I spoke to you about last month, I have nothing new to report on that. I'm still working. And I hopefully have a plan of action for you next month. My two thousand twenty-six project, so to be rewriting the emergency operation procedure for the common town of Canterbury. I'm just looking for some grant funding to assist us with that. It's not a lot of money, but there's grant money out, money out there for the firms to help you. The last, it was last time in two thousand and twelve, and they recommend an update every five years.
And that's for grant money for something specific or in general?
Emergency operations plan.
Emergency.
For the, for the town. In my last bullet, I just submitted paperwork for to get the balance of our remaining money, as you know, for our new engine. It needed all new hoses and all those, because all that stuff on the current engine three is just out of date and it's not viable. So that cost me just over twenty-four, twenty-four thousand dollars. The grant made the town cost for that eleven hundred dollars. So I just submitted that money today, and so all new hose on the new fire truck coming in, and it cost town eleven hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Twenty-five thousand dollar project. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
That's all. That's, come on, give us more. This, that's amazing. Thank you. This has been a heck of a month.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Especially thank you for rooting around, getting grants and, you know, the ones you've gotten so far. Always helps.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Cardy, you want?
Thanks, Chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, piggyback off Chief Demas, the incident on Borough Road. Once we got there and figured out what was going on, we had the dogs from, Beau first. Once that dog tracked far enough and got tired, we had Pembroke Canine come out. Pembroke Chief also offered up some ATVs for us, should be needed when it got to that point. Allentown sent their drone operator up, so we had them up. Fishing game came out, because that's their specialty is going through the woods and finding people. So fishing game, essentially, for lack of a better word, takes over. They don't force us out or anything. They work with us, but it's their call, essentially. They, they, say, take command, but they, they have more resources than we do for that type of situation. But like Chief Demas said, without all the resources from the surrounding towns that we have, would have been a lot harder for us. So it was, it was very nice to have the resources that we got from all those towns. We did have the track this weekend. We had no issues. Everything was smoothly on our end.
And it was a sell-off, I understand.
Yeah, it was quite larger than we've had in the years past. So. And they, they, they were a little worried because we staffed it like we have in the last couple of years. So. But it worked out good. There's no incidents on either of our sides. So.
Great.
In the last thirty days, we've had twelve incidents, six arrests, one accident, one hundred and eighteen citations, five hundred and seventy-six calls for service. And state police assisted us with three issues after hours, and we had twenty-four hours worth of training.
Okay.
That's all we had.
While we're thinking again about the rescue out in, on the Borough Road, can, is there a way to get a list of the participating entities? And I think we should send them a thank you note. They really, everybody came together and got one of our people home safely, and I think that's worth a thank you.
Yeah, we can get together and get a list of everybody.
That would be great. Thank you. I'll write thank you notes down.
Perfect.
And we've got the town letterhead.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Rachel or Sam, either of you press for time. Need to. Okay, there you go.
Sam and Pam, all right.
Oh, I am, I am here to just report formally for the supervisors of the checklist that we have found a candidate for the moderator vacancy.
Excellent.
Great.
And I have a letter, just so you have a document attesting to that, that Jessica Treadway has agreed to serve as moderator, and she's really excited about it. So we're really excited about that.
Tell her we are as well.
Yeah.
So.
Good, good.
Do we need to sign an official appointment? I don't know how that works or.
We'll have to do an appointment slip and have to, you guys will sign up next meeting.
Great.
Cool.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
That's great news.
Oh, yeah. You're very happy.
Yeah.
So.
You can just.
And then I'll just slip out.
Yeah.
Yeah. What, you don't want to stay? Come on, come on, Pam.
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah.
Receiving word list. No major changes from last month.
Yep. And I assume, Sam, I think we asked this the last time, no further contact with Beulah?
No further contact with Beulah. So those still are where they have worked last?
Yep.
Two thousand twenty-three lean, we have three people on a lean list.
Yep.
One of which is the loving property, and I just want to keep that in front of everybody because when it comes to dealing time, we want to make sure that we're on top of that and understand where everybody is. So I guess best case scenario is that Ken and I meet and we're going to talk about, contact a lawyer and get that started now so that by May or June of next year, when we're actually executing these processes and then we don't have any questions.
Yeah.
And the second one is Sam Berry, and I have not heard from her since she paid off her last lean. So perhaps you guys want to call her in and ask her to come to a meeting and discuss this with her. Because she hasn't contacted me, and she hasn't made any payments on the account.
And the last payment she made was like eleventh hour, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just asked Ken to reach out and invite her to come talk to us.
Okay, great. Not familiar with the first property.
No, me neither.
It's Bacon. It's a Sherwood Forest lot.
Ah, okay.
And she always comes throughout the eleventh hour in Bacon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions for me?
None for me?
No, just that one.
Yeah.
And Beulah, as you said, which we haven't heard back from.
And Cal, anything you think? Yeah, okay, thanks, Sam.
Sooner we can get Jessica Treadway's pumpkin slip, the better, because we've got training rolling out now.
Okay.
I can't sign her up or get her onto the Secretary of State's website until that's signed and she's actually officially oofed.
Understood, okay.
That's all rolling out now.
Do we have to wait until a meeting to do that, or can we?
I can just make it tomorrow and then text you guys.
You come in?
We can all stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
We'll stop and then do it.
It'll be signed by Paul's Business tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll be great. She is very excited about the, the prospect of doing this and has thought about it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cool, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sam.
Good evening, Mrs. Baker.
Now, one of those is for you, if you want to name the library.
Oh, there, yes, please.
Cut out the middle man.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So I'm about to meet with my trustees to do a final review of the budget, and I'll have a final budget to Ken in morning. After they look through it, make whatever changes they want, and then I'll submit that. We do have the new staff members starting, and Mrs. Lauren Prosper is joining the library.
Oh, really? Good.
Yes.
Nice.
No one has a better place in Elkins Public Library. She, she's a child of this town, and she named Harold the Bear. So she's an important person, and she'll be joining our team as a children's room assistant. So very few hours to start, because she's also working at church. So we're very excited about that. The burglar alarms have all been converted, so Ken, we're totally online with all of our rework. Ken and I had talked about that. I had enough money in my, in my equipment line and my repairs line. So all of our lines have been totally converted, which is a long and expensive process, but I feel real good about it. So that's done. Peter Galatas is trying to fit us in. He'll complete some of the ceiling tiles and door bar inside. And as you know, you know, we handle the repairs, paying for the repairs inside, and town pays for the outside. Peter's been really wonderful and fair, so I think I'm going to be able to eat that gutter repair. But I'll have to be really careful in terms of, I think I could take it on to my budget.
Okay. Let us know if you can.
Okay, but I'd like to. I like to do that as much as I can, since it's our building and, and, you know, in the era of cooperation, I like to do that. Nick Wright is going to come. Again, I've referred these guys so much, and then they forget who referred them. And that's recorded. But he's going to come and do some paint touch-ups. I did not have the prisoners come this summer because we're just really in good shape. I just need a couple of things here and there, and they really need to schedule like a full day kind of thing, and I don't have a full day's work. I just bought a pressure washer for the library of things, or rather, the trust did. And so I'm going to power wash the painted surface, and I think that's going to look nice. But I'm going to have Nick take the, when we put the vinyl letters up, no, excuse me, the vinyl letters are already up. But when they came and did that roof in great speed, some of the bottom, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Just peeled the paint up a little bit, and I just got to get, I got to get that done. That's it. A lot of collaborations. We'll be doing our apple picking field trip at Hackle Borough Orchards. We're working with the Tricentennial Group because Mark Stevens is going to present a program for Elkins Public Library Speaker Series on October ninth. And the Tricentennial Committee is going to use that as kind of a soft launch for what they're doing. So a lot of collaboration.
You want one of them?
A lot of collaboration, which we really love to do.
Yeah. What's the program, Mark Stevens? It's Three Hundred Years of Canterbury or something?
It's called Three Hundred Years Ago.
Ooh, ago?
Ago.
Ago.
Ago. And it just, we'll talk about, you know, a snapshot of where we were three hundred years ago. But Mark and I have kind of engineered it to be kind of a soft launch for people thinking about the tricentennial slash selling license plates slash door prices that they weren't able to do at the fair. We're going to do it this time, so.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I was involved in.
Yes, for sure.
That's good. Yeah. Nope. Thank you.
Gardens are looking beautiful.
Thank you. Rob and Carrie Hunter.
Yeah.
I am very grateful, and the friends just reimbursed me for hose, nozzle.
That's great.
Things that, yeah, it looks, it looks beautiful.
Yes, it does.
And I'm not.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the best part.
Okay.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right.
The pavement at Mr. Brasky's is no longer.
Yay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've heard that. I've had a review of them.
Very good.
We put down some inch and a half crush and put calcium over it.
Yeah, very good.
We've been touching up roads as we can, trying not to break them open.
Yeah.
The washboard are just making it worse, so try. We've been doing some ditching down by the spring on Intervale. Inspection month, the Packer is going to need rear brakes. We're waiting on that. And then that, we're done except for the pickup truck. Needing a little mono and such. Right now, I'm down two tracks. I started out okay this morning.
I sort of wondered, I saw a big puddle of paper, and yeah, I thought, not that likely a case.
Not good. They got it back to the shop.
Good.
Outfit underwear is going to come over Monday and take a look at that.
Good.
T one. T three. Which we just, which I haven't used since it came back from allegiance, as it went down the hook and they found nothing wrong.
I remember that, yeah.
Wouldn't start.
Yeah.
When we went after that. So we did get it going finally, and we're in the process of changing out battery cables, two batteries to starter. Something lit up underneath when we were messing around. And when we got them out, they didn't look bad, so. Not good. Paving is scheduled for the end of the month, and I haven't heard any change as to that. And I would think they're fairly close to this schedule, seeing how we haven't had much rain.
Yeah.
And any questions for me?
No.
That all sounds good.
Yeah, looking ahead, John, we have a six o'clock appointment about Old Boys Road signage.
Yeah, she would like a slow children's sign.
Okay.
Sixty-two dollars. Be ready tomorrow.
And I believe the letter said something about a mirror as well.
Maybe a mirror.
I told her I was against that.
Okay.
John, do you happen to need, this is a silly question perhaps, but do you, you've got the sign coming. Do you need any of the big metal posts?
I have some posts at the shop.
Okay, I have two extra from the Conservation Commission. We took out of SCUDAC. Do you want them for any future uses?
You never know what we need.
Oh, I'll bring them up then. Yeah.
John, Borough Road, somebody came in and asked about the culvert. I guess there's a culvert under the, where you guys are going to pave. They said it's not culverting. I don't know if it's blocked up, crushed, something. They asked if it could be looked at before the pavement was put over it. That was today.
Okay.
I just, don't shoot the messenger. They said it's clogged, because I don't know, I don't know. I didn't look at it. Haven't been up to Borough, so.
How would you know? There hasn't been enough water to go through it.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
To show that it's clogged.
Just, I'm just doing my job. But they, yeah, so, I don't know. If you guys look at it when you pave, it should see if it's collapsed.
You don't, you didn't say which of the five was the issue?
It's under the pavement. That's all I know.
Okay.
That's it.
All right.
Got nothing, except thank you.
Yeah.
Been a hot, dry summer, so thank you.
Yeah, it sure has.
I keep having people ask me, when are we going to water the roads? And like, maybe when we get water.
For election, because we were pulling from Old Tilton to Swamp, and that is dry.
Yeah.
Definitely leave the center alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, we may need it for fire.
So Pickett, or misery, has been the spots we pulled from misery, trying to leave Pickett alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, people are going to have, what, as you say, the horses need something to drink too, so. All right.
While John's here, just further down on the list of the business is the Vayler update.
Oh, yeah.
Is loaded in the back of, for the F-550s and going to be headed to Milton, to the Farm Museum on Wednesday morning.
Yay. Are you driving that up, or who's driving you up?
Robert and Jesse will be taking it up, in case they need to help guide it out of the truck.
All right, good. And which museum did you say, Ken?
It's the New Hampshire Farm Museum.
Farm Museum, okay. In Milton?
Milton, New Hampshire.
Oh, I wanted to go there.
There is a website.
Okay, thank you.
They were very pleased that we would think of them. And I will ask the gentleman, going to take a few pictures when he gets there.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, even cellphone pics are.
Yep.
Great.
It's a happy ending, good.
Yes.
Had somebody willing to take it. All right, where do you want to go from here, Ken?
Do we need to talk about lights in the highway garage while John is here?
We certainly can. John talked to me the other day about some lights. I went up there and out of thirty-three units, eight of them are functioning.
Eight out of thirty-three, not thirty, not eight, god, oh geez.
So I got ahold of an electrician, the one that did the highway, the fire department.
Yep.
And he gave us a estimate of ten thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to replace them all. And it's actually cheaper to replace the fixtures. We, at the fire station, we replaced just the bulbs and rewired the fixtures. It's actually cheaper now to re, to, to replace all the fixtures. I contacted Unitol, and there are rebates available through New Hampshire Saves. I have to get them more information to let them know how much, what, what type of fixtures, more details, and they will give me a rebate. We have about sixteen thousand dollars, a little more than sixteen thousand dollars in our capital reserve fund for building maintenance. We've already used several thousands of dollars out of that this year for the septic pumps and a few other things. But it, I don't, I don't see how we can go through the winter with eight, nineteen bolts.
How could you even see what you were doing?
So even if we do half of them or something like that, I think it might be. But I'll get the information of the, of the rebates and come up with a total cost to town and for you guys now.
And are they getting replaced with newer, better, more energy efficient fixtures? Could we use our adder funds from Community Power?
That's a good question. They are, I mean, they're going to be LEDs instead of fluorescent, so that.
But didn't Edgar, off the top of your head, isn't it for renewable resources only?
Yes, renewable resources.
So I'm not sure that would, yeah.
I think it would be worth asking.
No, it has to be some kind of initiative, like.
Not, not just being more.
Replace in some of the, sorry.
Yeah.
Darn.
So I, but I will look into what New Hampshire Saves can give us, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
From assuming like LED bulbs and all the, yeah, yeah, all the latest.
Yeah, really, even half would get you way further, like, fifteen versus eight.
From them, and they talked about motion sensor fixtures. I'm not sure. I'll talk to John about it and see what he thought, what his thought is on that.
Yeah.
So we'll go from there.
Yeah, I, so I had him, the building I worked in, and not bad. You know, in areas unused, they go dark and they come back up when something moves.
I know when we did the fire station, we talked about it.
Yeah.
We thought, you know, office areas, they're fine for, but we weren't sure about the high bays.
Yeah.
Didn't know if that would really work very well, the high bays.
Right, that's a good question. You know, my setting is all office.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll work on that, and I'll bring something to you next time.
I don't think it's really big enough for that.
May not be.
May not be, yeah, that may be the answer there.
I, I know the garage is pretty large, but still, that, the light from that side helps.
Right.
When you're under the truck to.
Yeah, well, we certainly want you guys to have enough light to work by, so.
Uh, yes.
It's either that or issues with headlights.
Seems you're doing a lot of work lately.
Yeah.
It'll have some steel gloves.
Right.
Exactly.
All right.
You're right.
So I guess more to follow on that.
Yes. Yep. I think. That's right there. Yeah. So, if you wanna do, I guess Al is here, if you wanna do TE investments, we can.
You don't wanna sit watches for another hour, so, do you? Get you home and.
Okay. So, I met with Mary last week and we looked at the investment, uh, auctions for TD Bank.
Yep.
And in your folders, you should have, um, some recommendations.
Recommendations.
Yeah. Uh, Mary and I talked about it, then I met with Al, we talked about it. And I think the three of us are kinda in agreement on this would be a proposal to, on a way to move forward.
Yep.
You could see, we figured October first, and this was, we looked at, at the, at the balance of the general fund.
Yep.
And what it has been historically, and then looking at some, some big payments that are coming up. Obviously, one is Merrick County.
Yep.
And then, uh, Shaker School District is, uh, October, November, December.
Yeah.
But taking those into consideration, if we invested five hundred thousand for one month with a maturity date of November first and five hundred for two months with maturity date of December first, and then rolled them, these two of those over in January, um, or one of them over in January, and you can see five hundred for one month, five for two months, and five for three months. And then review, um, in, in May and looking at our balance, maybe, consider a strategy for June and July.
Yeah.
So, review in May?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would certainly unfortunately expect between now and then, probably the, uh, interest rates will drop for CDs. I'm not sure you've thought of that as well.
Yeah, and that's, um, I contacted the bank and told them that we were gonna be talking about this tonight. And that was the reply was, um, just so you know, the interest rates are dropping and the longer investment is, you'll see better returns on it, so. But, again, Mary and I and Al looked at all of this and looked at the balances and felt that this was probably a, a way to start.
I think it's a good one.
And it seems a safe enough way, it's not extreme, it's a good test, way to test it, okay?
And then we'll evaluate, you see how it goes.
Yep.
Then go from there.
Yeah.
We don't wanna lose money here.
Right.
No. And the actual, how much help can the town get from the people at TD Bank as far as figuring this out, or is that all our staffing having to?
So, the only, only extra work that is, is gonna happen is, we'll have a, uh, an extra, um, statement. And, I mean, we'll, we'll have to sign some paperwork, we do the transfer.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But then we'll get a statement and then the transfers will be done automatically through TD Bank and there's no extra charge for it, nothing.
Okay.
Like that, so, no, no big drain on, on staff for this.
Good.
Or out.
Or out, yeah.
Signing, signing some paperwork and that's pretty much it.
And the calculations as to how much we can afford, that's all part of what Mary is doing anyway?
Again, we looked at it with Mary and Al and went over our, our balance a little last historic, last year. And what our expenses are and this is what we came up with.
Great. Alrighty. Thank you.
All right.
So, is that a yes go forward?
Certainly a yes from me.
That's a yes from me.
Al, did you?
Calvin?
I nodded.
Oh! I couldn't, I couldn't hear your brains rattling. Thank you, Al. All right. Yay.
Yeah. Pop scotching around, it seems to work, shit. All right, what do you think?
Um, I don't know, is.
I don't know. Kevin?
Anybody?
Anybody here for, looking to talk with us?
Well, can, is there any new business tonight?
There, we do have some new business, yeah.
Me, like from the public?
It's all public.
If, if you wonder, address us by all means. Come on up, have a seat, and let's talk.
So, I live up on Old Gilmanton Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, Donald Pare, P-A-R-E. And, um, we've got some speeding going on that I've addressed with the police chief and we just seem to be getting nowhere with this. Sunday morning, there was a guy, he, he lives all the way down by the pond, off of Nottingham, down at the end and he, he came by on Old Gilmanton, probably doing seventy miles an hour. And you know, the only thing we saw was the dust trail, pretty much, at that point, you know? And I get the dust is what it is this year with the water situation. But, um, he's not the only one, there's a few people that just come down Gilmanton Road and we need to do something about that. 'Cause, you know, my wife walks, she goes to the mailbox, she gets down by the knotweed.
Yep.
And you can't even, if you're standing there and somebody just went by and created a bunch of dust, she can get hit by a car. Not just her, there's a lot of people that walk dogs around there and, you know, the knotweed needs to be cut back. I don't know who did it this weekend, 'cause I was away for a week, came back and somebody looks like they hacked, I don't think it was you, was it, John? Yeah, somebody just whacked and left it all over the road so that we can drag it down the road a little further, you know? So, that's the big, that's my question, that's my biggest thing in public safety going on on Old Gilmanton Road.
Okay.
That needs to be addressed.
You got that on me?
Yeah. I do.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Perez, has it, anything changed after, um, they went through and talked to people about doing ATVs? Is that gone down?
Yes, I'm not gonna mention any names, but it's the same fellow, that, one of the speeders.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, but this is a car, not an ATV?
Uh, no, we don't, we don't see that anymore.
Okay, well, okay, that's good.
ATV seems to have worked, but there's a guy there that just got in trouble for a fire. He was out lighting fires in his barrel, whatever, and his, his grandson comes down our street, probably doing forty on an electric bicycle. He's thirteen years old without a helmet on. I'm just, kid's gonna get hurt.
Yeah.
The grandfather is not smart enough to pay attention. When I talked to the policeman about it, he was gonna come up and try to, I said, you know, every morning at seven o'clock when he's heading to the bus stop, he's flying.
Yeah.
And he's gonna get hurt, you know? And he's just somewhere to talk to him because nobody else is, I've, I've spoken to him, but he doesn't, doesn't care, you know?
Yeah.
But I think if a police officer gave him a little warning and, uh, he may calm down a little bit.
Yeah, hopefully it has some impact.
Because there's other kids that are walking to the bus stop and he's flying by full board, thirty-five, at least with that bicycle, he's flying.
I know there's a lot of bikes nowadays, it's just amazing how fast they go.
Right. And there's a, there's a, there's a place for them and that's just not it.
Yeah, agree.
So. That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's good to know, the ATV has gone down a little bit and see what we can do about the other, thanks for coming in.
They never come down on Old Gilmanton where I'm at, they were turning and they were going up, up, up Old Gilmanton.
Yeah.
From Nottingham.
Yeah.
And that's what created the issue.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming in.
You got it, thank you, John.
All right. Yay.
And Kevin and Dave, you guys are just spectating at this point, or?
Uh, at this point, although I do have an HDC thing that I can.
Come on down.
Mention. Uh, as you know, we've been short with Harry's resignation. So, I would like to submit for your consideration, um, for a full voting member, um, Vanessa Crofton to Baptist Road.
And how it's house.
Very interested. Has lived in a fourteenth century building prior to moving here, so knows a little bit about historic preservation and architecture and stuff. Just seems to be interested in doing something involved with the community, so.
Good.
We would be happy to have her, so, throw that out there.
Very good.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Well, that's good to know.
Dave, nothing from you?
You know, I'm just here to hear the discussion about sign ordinances and placement.
Okay. That's actually, um, is that that person is coming in, Ken, or is that something else?
No, this is leftover from.
Sign ordinance is from the center.
Okay. Oh, that's right, that's right. Or, mind me, we've got twenty, almost twenty-nine minutes, why don't we bounce down next? Dave, do you, do you wanna speak, speak, or, or just sort of listen?
Well, I, I'd just like to kinda hear what's going on with it and then, you know, some commentary relative to the story thing.
Sure, yeah, it sounds good to us. I'm certain. All right, so, Ken, you sent us.
Yeah, the town signs, center sign policy that was done in two thousand and nine, I have one copy of it here.
I've got it on my, anybody need over?
No, I printed mine out.
Yeah, I think we've all. And I didn't actually think to look when I went by, what signs are up there today?
The only one that, well, there's two, one for Hackamore Orchard, which was approved by the Board of Selectmen. And there's another for, um.
White Flower Farm?
Yes.
Is that still there?
That is still there.
Okay.
I just wanna get that up slightly.
Go look at mine too, if you want. Got it?
No, I've got it.
All right.
So, to clarify, the town owns the green.
Yes.
The entire island is the town's.
Yes.
And nothing else?
Well, then that's the, that's the question I had because it talks about the sign policy in the historic center of the town of Canterbury. And I brought that up for a minute with, um, Ken this morning. To me, the historic center is not just the green, it's everything you see when you're standing in the green and you turn around. It's the cemetery, it's the library, the old library, it's the Hauser, it's the whole piece of real estate that you see. It's not clarified here where that is. Most people seem to think that signs get stuck on the, on the, on the green around the bandstand, but we have had signs stuck on the lawn going up to the Elkins Memorial before.
Well, I'm just curious, 'cause it says all signs placed on town land require prior approval by the Board of Selectmen. So, I was just wondering what our jurisdiction is as to what we can enforce. We can't enforce the church, you can't, you can't enforce, like, where, where does it stop, or where does it begin?
So, anything on town land.
Okay.
This is geared towards the center, but any town land, if there's, if the town owns a piece of property somewhere else, you're the property owner, the town's the property owner, and they can, they can dictate whether signs are allowed on it or not.
And it'll be, as I drive through there almost daily, um, you know, the, what I had noticed was signs appearing without my knowledge, which shouldn't happen, really.
Well, I think I asked Ken today, like, who is approved, I guess, for signs, and it's only.
There's only.
Three. No, no, but I mean, there's only three currently approved.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, I guess putting on my HDC hat.
Please do.
Um, I was first only tangentially aware that there was a policy, it had something to do with handmade signs. This is the first time I've ever seen it.
Okay.
And I, maybe that's part of the problem, is that do residents in town know that there's a specific policy outside of the normal ordinance, uh, in the zoning which speaks to signs? Because this is not in that ordinance, so if somebody went looking to see what can or cannot do, where do you find this? Is it posted anywhere, is it accessible? And then my second thing went to Beth's, um, when it says town center sign policy, is that the Senate Historic District as a zone, is it the green itself? Is it, like, can say an all-town owned property, I think.
'Cause this policy in particular says town center sign policy, not in town sign policy.
I think maybe there is room for a rewrite of some sort that clarifies some of that because I'm not so sure that if there's an intent here in the center, let's say the green, why wouldn't that carry forward to any other town-owned property, or let's say the Shaker Historic Overlay District? You know, so, to me, this is kinda fuzzy. Um, and I'm not against it, I'm just saying that I, I didn't know where to look for it, for one.
Yeah.
And then when I got it, it's like, well, what are we talking about? A micro thing like the green itself, or is it a larger thing?
Ken, you were on the board apparently when this was signed, what was your thinking?
So, this came up because there were some signs placed on the green back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that, and the Board of Selectmen received a complaint about it. So, they felt, at the time, we felt, um, that we needed to come up with a policy, particularly about the center. And it was that they, the Selectmen would review an application, so to speak, for a sign. If you look at number four A, all signs placed on town land require pri- prior approval by the Board of Selectmen, that covers all town properties.
Okay.
Not just the town green, but all town properties. If somebody wanted to put up a sign on some town-owned land somewhere, they would need prior approval by the Board of Selectmen. That's just, it's just like if somebody wanted to put a sign on your property, they would have to ask you permission.
Right.
To get, put a sign there.
So, we frequently have things show up like the Belmont Middle School, uh, craft show or the, uh, sunflower event down at Brookford, and these pre-printed signs just show up and are there for usually a long time and then go away.
Yeah.
And now, it's a, it's a good spot for a sign, for the center, but should they actually be coming to get approval for that before they put it, poke it in the ground?
Yes.
Okay.
According to this policy, yes.
Okay.
John? So, so the Y at Shaker and, and Baptist has always been a pet peeve of.
Yeah, yeah.
Previous, or even up here at Center in one thirty-two. So, by that policy, they should not be showing up there.
Well, the end of Kimball Pond and one thirty-two, both of those little triangles.
Yeah, all those little triangles.
Or, or those town-owned parcels, though, or they state.
Well.
Well, that's another good question.
That's, that's a good question.
Yeah.
I, previous Boards of Selectmen have been more sensitive to this than others.
Yeah.
Pendulum kinda swings back and forth. I think this came up because there were three or four signs there and there was a question asked about it.
Yeah.
And I said, well, yeah, there's a sign policy, 'cause when I was on the Board of Selectmen, we, we made it.
You signed, you signed it.
Yeah, we, uh, we actually just, uh, had a meeting with the state and I'm here, the blue directional signs to, to things, so. And, and those are the two locations where they are putting up signs for the store. So, I don't know if that has any, gives you any direction about who maintains the triangle.
It's probably the state, yeah.
But, yeah, they're, they're, they're very particular about, you know, what, what they, okay.
You mean the signs where it says Canterbury Center or Shaker Village, or, you know, whatever, the directional things, okay?
Yeah. And Dave, um, I guess a question for me is, you're there obviously almost every day.
Yeah.
And, um, what do you think, I mean, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I, I came up, I think, to the store.
Yeah.
And it just looked, it was this amalgamation of signs upon signs upon signs, all facing me as I came up to the stop sign at, uh, at Center and, uh, Kimball Pond. And it just, you know, being a Selectman, I should know what signs are, are okay there, and like, four of them weren't okay. That's sort of my objection, my issue, if you will. What do you think?
My, my, my feeling is, it, it, it should be, you know, pretty sternly regulated, honestly. I mean, that is the, the face of our town, the first place anyone sees.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, I think there's already a process in, in place for that. And it's just a matter of, if something is, is not approved, who's tasked with, with removing it?
Well, that, yeah.
You know, is it just-
That's a very good question.
You know, the first town employee that happens to come by, just pulls it out? Or, yeah, and this is where things stay, you know?
Yeah.
You know, Zuma Roofing was all over, all the corners for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know who that is, and, you know.
Somebody came through apparently one day and just planted a bunch of signs.
Yeah, and that maybe goes to what you mean maybe is a policy for off-site signage. The ordinance speaks to the onsite. And, and you're right, it could be just stuffed, tacked phone poles that you see all the time, or-
Right. I don't know that we have jurisdiction, for instance, utility poles is a very good point. But we don't have jurisdiction over those, that would be, I know-
The owner of the property, right, utility.
Yeah.
Either the toll booth company or the-
Yeah.
So, a business could just stick up a-
Those little ones for Jim's clocks that are everywhere?
Yeah.
Which are great little signs, and they're not intrusive, but they are everywhere.
So, even though it may be an easement of a property owner, it's really the utility that's gonna step in.
Yeah, typically, if the linemen need to climb, they'll tear them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just for safety reasons. Um, and Kevin, before I lose the thought, I wanted to, um, address the portrait made up about, do people know about it, do they know where to look? I, I think the answer is, and I look at it as, I think, what would a, what would a sensible person do? And I don't think a sensible person would come plant a sign in a, what's clearly a historic center of town without asking someone, and, and Sam Lake is literally two hundred feet up the road, it's that far. Yeah, I, I go back and I think you were there to one of the candidate nights where we had a woman stand up and say that she threw away the church newsletters when they came, and had never thought to open one, and, and realized that it contained town news, not necessarily church news only. So, I, I think you have to have an interest in, um, a particular topic.
I don't know, I'm-
Such as a sign policy.
But, but is this, I mean, literally, is it hanging on a bulletin board, or is it in one of those form holders?
It's on the website.
It is on the website.
It is. But I'm not sure I agree, Scott, because I think it's so, you know, pervasive everywhere. People drive along, they poke a sign in the ground, they're, they're not thinking it's a historic center. They're thinking this is where, a place where a lot of traffic goes through, and there's already a couple of signs there.
Yeah.
So they don't even think any further than that, but-
Well, I, I think maybe you have, they just, they don't think.
Right.
And, and that's, you know, we could get into a much larger discussion about it.
That's a, that's a much bigger discussion.
I, I mean, if you bring it-
Or have a sign to address the sign. I mean, I mean, literally, could you have a small sign that's on there, and just says, all signage must be put, you know, no posting without approval, or whatever the language is?
We, we could certainly look at that, yeah.
Well, we could certainly also do a lot better job, I think, as to Kevin's point of advertising it. You know, again, the, an update, just in the next newsletter, the next town email, put it in a couple of times, if you're gonna put signs. Because, and I also don't wanna be a total stick-in-the-mud about it, because, um, if it's a town event like the sunflower thing down at Brookford, or the, the cow parade or something, I support that, it's a local business, it's a local thing, but it would be, it would be good if they, one, asked and two, took their signs down.
Right, right.
And didn't have them up for, you know, like, a month ahead of time.
Yeah.
So, I think we need to do, get a little bit more specific about it.
Yeah, I don't know if you overheard our conversation in the store Saturday morning, there was the sweetest couple in town from New York. And I got talking to the husband, and they just gushed about the center of town, and how gorgeous it was, they were buying, I think, some pastries and some coffee, they went to sit at the gazebo. And it, I wanna keep it that way, though.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I want it to be a, a welcoming place without all these garish signs staring people in the face when they, they stop in just for a cup of coffee, or to, to use the bathroom, whatever the case is.
Yeah, well, probably as the person who looks at it more than anyone else
Yeah.
on a weekly basis, I, I wholeheartedly agree. I, I do have a question, too.
Sure.
We, um, because, you know, in one sense, I think we violated this, this, this ordinance, is when there is a, um, special event at the church, or the, um, farmer's market,
Yeah.
we will put out, you know, for that event, two additional store parking signs?
I noticed them the other day, actually.
And they, and they're not supposed to be up past the event.
Yeah.
And I saw they were still there this morning, but, um, so they were in the green adjacent to, you know, what is a, a, our parking lot
Yeah.
there, is that something that we should come get approved, and is it okay? For that sort of thing to be up for those events, specifically?
Are those the signs you might have been, somebody was mentioning the no parking signs for, for events?
The store parking lot, yeah.
Is that different than the no parking signs we were talking about this morning?
I don't know, I didn't see them. Yeah.
I think during the Friends of, uh, the Canterbury Center events, there were no parking signs that went up. But I don't know if they're your signs, or what others, which other signs went up?
We put up, uh, three handicap signs, because in blocking off, in front of the store, we've blocked off a handicap space.
Yeah.
And, so, what we've done to try to organize and get as much parking in there as possible is along the curving, you see some temporary white paint that I put in.
Oh, okay.
With ten feet apart. So that as people pull in, we start to get people started, and then they park diagonally. So we get more people in, those three happen to be on the green itself, and we have some people who show up, and those are their spots, and I love it, that they feel they can just sit and talk.
I think I know who you're talking about, actually, so.
Um, but no, there's no no parking signs that I'm aware of.
Okay, yeah, and I think, Dave, we could certainly help you out with that. You know, some type of as-needed, uh-
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, like Saturday is a good example, you know, when there's, there's an event, and if you don't otherwise post it, you know, people will fill up the entire lot. And, and I think they, there's not a clear definition of what is the town, what is the church, and what belongs to the building.
Yeah.
And really, it's, everything is one of our-
I'm not sure it's all that clear, I think we've, we've looked at that before.
But what, the church owns all the part, the, the paved part?
No, really, no. It's, it's clear, I went out and found all the pins.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, let's, let's take a walk sometime, seriously.
But-
Yeah.
Yeah, it brings up, in particular, that situation this weekend was, is the signs were clearly not according to this, right, they were on the town property.
Yeah.
But, the LLC property goes up to within about a foot of the curb, granite curbing
Oh, okay.
side of the green.
Yeah.
So theoretically, all but that one foot where Gigi's right tire sits is store parking.
Okay.
Um, uh, and I don't wanna get into a whole discussion about traffic flows and that, because there is something to be talked about there, but, but yeah, certainly, um, particularly if you're not from town and you're coming to an event like a wedding,
Yeah.
they don't know
Yeah.
what's why, and you can't blame them, you know?
Yeah.
But you also can't hinder the store's business because of that.
Right.
And I wonder if there isn't a way we can, you know, we've been working, LLC's been working with the church, and that was one of the things, was, was the church okay putting the signs on their property, is it absolutely?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, again, you gotta know to go look, right?
Yeah.
But there's plenty of other parking here and up here that they maybe don't see, don't know about.
Yeah.
Could the church advertise that?
Right.
Could the farmer's market advertise it, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe they'll think about it.
Agreed.
So how can we best get this policy to actually work, have people know about it, be, uh, precise enough that people know how to use it? And we also have to, um, talk about the sign request that we got from down on Moral Road as part of this whole thing, cause that's kind of what started this, we still have that outstanding. And that's a hand-painted sign for her business, Light Hackleboro Orchard. And, and my only, um, addition to that would be, okay, so if it fits all the criteria, and it's a beautiful hand-painted sign, and it's for a local event, and a local business, yada, 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 what if we have six people who want to do them all at once?
Yeah.
You know, do we have a? And that's part of rewriting this, I think, so it would make sense. And again, not being a stick-in-the-mud about it for other town businesses.
Well, Baptist Hill Road, Baptist, Baptist Hill Road?
Yeah.
There used to be, the post is still there.
Yeah.
I think the L man kinda hanging off of the smokehouse.
Smokehouse is signed, they, they need to, um-
So there's several businesses up there over the years that have posted stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they have an opportunity to, and those intersections that the town has something to require that whatever signs get put there by businesses have a certain sign, style, whatever, like, okay.
If we're gonna get into this and enforce this, you realize there's a huge can of worms with every sign in town that is not in compliance with town side ordinance? So we can't pick and choose just to enforce the green, if we enforce this, we need to enforce everything. Meaning all the businesses that aren't registered, all the home occupations, everything. Cause you can't, you can't just pick and choose enforcing on the town green, cause it's not pretty.
Correct.
There's numerous other violations you drive down the road, and by the order of law-
If you start with the town center sign policy, and then the larger town policy, um, the historic district, I assume, I think had is a special consideration. Um, but, you're right, we would have to do them both and do them all, like anything.
But local businesses, if they're on their own property, just have the ordinance. Well, yeah, but if they're not registered as a home occupation, that's a whole separate thing.
But that's what I'm saying, is you're open this can of worms, I can name seven properties right now that have signs for businesses that aren't approved.
That they can have a sign on their own property, there's no question to that. The question is, is, did you register as a home occupation first? But the sign issue is no different. As long as it meets the, whatever, ten square feet, like, more than ten feet off the ground, whatever the sign ordinance in the zoning is, if it's on your property and you do that,
Yeah.
you're fine.
Well, this also, um, goes to the larger, um, idea of the sign, the information sign that you've had people asking you about, and where it could go, and what it could say, and how often it's up, and is it permanent, is it lit, and all of that. So this would have to deal with that, too. But, we still have two questions, how do we get this rewritten, or amended, or at least make sense? And how do we advertise it, and what do we do about the innocent sign from Moral Road?
Um, do we have an application for them?
Yes.
It's in the whole business folder.
Alright, well.
And it looks like it's not much different than the sign that Harry puts up in the, you know, for sugaring, or blueberry picking, or whatever.
Yeah. Chat board.
I can't think the last time we've got, I mean, when was the last time anybody got it? I mean, it hasn't been in a year and a half, so what do I know about how often we get
Right.
requests, but-
I haven't seen one, I don't think, in my time.
It's been one other one since I started.
Yeah, but it's pretty rare. But I, you know, I think it's only fair, if we, if we have done it for a business on Hackleboro, why wouldn't we do it for a business on Moral?
Yeah, and I think, you know, as, as it stands, it fits all the requirements. It's hand-painted, it's a local business, it's agricultural, and it's temporary. So, um, personally, though, we've got, um, signs up, I'm, I'm not opposed to this one, and I think, um, it won't be that long, since it's a farm stand, and-
It says to October thirty-first.
Yeah, so it'll be, uh, so at the, at the moment, there'll be Harry's sign, there'll be that sign, and only until October first, for two days a week, there'll be the farmer's market sign.
Yeah.
Then that'll stop after October first.
Yeah.
And it'll just be those two. Um, and I don't know what, if we wanna make a decision one way or the other about other events like Christmas craft shows, craft fairs and stuff, I don't think we have to do that quite yet, but-
Right. Alright, um-
Because at one point, yeah, we had farmer's market, we had the, the, um, sunflower soiree, we had the Friends of Canterbury Center thing, so, you know, those are all temporary, they're all local, they're all community, so we're still gonna have to figure that out a little bit.
Yeah.
But the only ones, of those that got permission, were at the Hackleboro Orchard and the farmer's market.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so then what, as we drive by, we pull them out? Is, is that the standard, was the standard now?
What we've done in the past is contact
Yeah.
Have them call the person, and, and the responsible party, have them come on and do an application for us, yeah.
And do we know what the, are those, um, Sun Day, Sun, S-U-N Day signs still out there? There was a bunch of blue signs, and it looked like they had blown over, and I wasn't sure if they were-
The only ones out there tonight when I came by was Hackleboro Orchard and the, uh-
Alright, then somebody came and picked them.
Farmer's stand up on that.
Or was it already passed, I think it was the twenty-first, the event might be passed? Okay.
Kevin, you have something else?
Uh, in, in the, there's actually another sign ordinance issue, uh, not issue, but, um, regulations in the museum preservation district, and one of the things they do actually say is, is that permanent advertising signs may be installed in clusters or individually and shall not exceed a total area based upon a single village sign, not exceeding twenty square feet, plus ten square feet for each separate use.
What? I need a, a diagram for that, man.
That's a pretty big sign.
That goes to multiple signage, because you may have two different things going on.
Right.
And this timing, yeah, I had a question on, because it also says that they can, temporary signs may be erected for periods not to exceed two weeks. So, talking about your harvest-type stuff.
Mm-hmm.
For instance, if I place, my harvest is April through the end of June,
Yeah.
am I limited to two weeks, out here, if I apply? Or is it the harvest, or how are we gonna?
I think we'll have to, because again, you're more like the White Flower Farm, it's your, it's a business, it's not an event.
Or like, has it been?
It's not an event, for sure.
And it's not exactly a harvest, like picking blueberries. It's a, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had about that.
And that's where I'm going with the harvest kind of piece.
Cause even if you think of Harry, apples, you know, blueberries, whatever else, he's, it's right, it's a couple months, so.
Um, so how do we get this, how do we consider this thing? Or do we all look at it, make our suggestions, and kind of like doing the code of conduct, do a couple of drafts?
I think that is what we do.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Is this gonna go out to Kevin for the HTC? Are they gonna have any input on this, or do you want input on this?
I think they should have input.
I think, yeah.
Sort of expedite the process a little bit?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I agree.
Since the policy, I mean, it's to protect and preserve the appearance and nature of the historic center, it sounds like HTC.
But wasn't that the whole purpose, by having kind of a handmade constructed signage, so that it wasn't like a bunch of plastic?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know, I didn't know.
Certainly makes sense.
Okay. So we've, we've signed-
We did, Ken, Ken's got it.
Okay.
Or Cal's got it now, perfect, yeah, so that would say-
And then we'll work on, um, our thoughts on this.
Yeah.
And, and I'm assuming Kevin will weigh in. What was the other one you were reading from, Kevin, the one you were just reading about, the?
That was for Shaker Village, right?
Yeah, for the Preservation District?
Oh, okay.
In their ordinance section.
Yeah. What they, they normally have the big sign, I'll call it. Um, and sometimes, I think I see a sandwich board that's out, right?
Yeah, I mean, over the years, they've had, like, there used to be a huge sign on the horse farm.
Oh, no kidding, okay.
On the lunchbox, restaurant sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Separate from the Greenwood sign, separate from-
Yeah.
And maybe why, is that a use issue?
Yeah, there's always a reason, something's done, so. Alright, and don't be afraid to, you know, I know most of us are in the store.
Yeah.
Way in, as you see things.
So, should I apply for the temporary parking signs, just to be compliant?
Yeah, it's, yeah, and then we'll, we'll just do a, kind of a one covers, on a irregular basis, or as needed, or whatever
Yeah.
we wanna say.
Well, but then, do they need to be hand-painted to be?
Well, I think we're gonna have to talk about-
I'm serious here, like this head.
No, we're, we're going to have to talk about hand painting, cause like farmer's market signs aren't, and, and, and won't be when we put out, you know, bazillions of them, but, bazillions, we put out thirty signs.
Yeah.
But, um, I think we're going to have to talk, think about that very carefully.
There you go.
Well, I'm just saying, like, the way it's written is, like, if you enforce it, you gotta enforce it the way it is. We can't say, I'll make an exception for Dave, cause the store is right there, and then the next person starts putting them back out, and then you're back where you were two months ago.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you're either gonna go full and enforce, or don't enforce it at all.
Yeah.
Or write it so that it can be flexible enough to-
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be, anyway, we'll see how it works. At the moment, this is what we got.
Get some old barn wood and start cutting it.
There you go.
There you go.
Give Jane a paintbrush, and tell her to have a ball.
But you make a good point. But you make a good point, yeah.
Okay, cause all it takes is one plastic sign to be out there, and then the person goes, well, Dave did it, why can't I put my plastic sign out there?
And the farmer's market signs are plastic. Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate your input and your discussion.
Absolutely.
Um. Great.
Somebody's being very smiley over there. Why is being so smiley?
It's my bedtime, so I'm surprised.
Oh, but we'll try to have you out of here shortly. You're assumed you're married, Kate?
Yes.
I'm Scott, Beth and Calvin.
Nice to meet you both.
Come on, come on, have a seat up here if you, so desire, bring your little one or not? That's up to you.
Practice walking, good job.
Yeah, this is Isabella, she turns one on Saturday.
Hi, Isabella.
And this is my husband Nathan.
How you doing? Good to meet you.
We live on five Oxbow Pond Road in Canterbury, and there's a corner where um Old Boys Road turns into Riverland Road.
Yeah.
And it, it's a blind corner and um mostly because there's a lot of overgrown brush uh that covers that corner.
Okay.
Um, low visibility.
So is the overgrown part, isn't, I haven't been down there in a while, but there was a trail that took off. Go ahead, John.
Trail on the corner is loaded with knotweed.
That's what, yeah, I, I kinda figured right where the um, there's like a park or, or a trail that goes down there, isn't it?
If you go straight down, you come around the corner and go straight to the end, there's the, the trails.
Yeah. Yeah. Gotcha, okay, alright.
Um, and there, we walk there every day.
Alright, we're completely distracted by that.
I know, come on, dude.
This is a ploy, right?
I know, it's great.
Cute baby.
Yeah, we, we walk there every day and I know there's um at least two other families that walk there very regularly.
Yeah.
I told them about the meeting, but they weren't able to make it. Um, and we were just hoping that we could come up with a solution because there are some, some big trucks that come down there for the landscaping and the businesses and. Even myself driving when I, even when I go around slowly, I'm, I'm just always terrified that there's gonna be a family on the other side of that corner.
Yeah.
Um, so we're hoping we could come up with a solution to. To, to increase visibility there, um and maybe secondarily reduce speed. Um, so some ideas that we had were, um.
Yeah.
Some ideas that we had were um. Maybe maintaining the brush a bit more. Nate even said that if that's something that he gets permission to do, that he wouldn't mind doing that. Um, or we've, we've also seen compact mirrors, just so you can see around the corner before you make the turn. Um, and then of course we could have signs saying like, slow children. My concern about the signs is that I feel like signs are often just ignored.
Hmm.
Um, so if we could effectively increase the visibility, I think that that would lead to a safer outcome, um than just the signage, but. Open to ideas and just thought that we could ask what we could do about that, just, you know, I wouldn't ever wanna hurt somebody and, you know, of course.
No.
When we're walking, we wanna make sure we're safe, so.
Absolutely. John, we, so we talked to John and.
Nice to meet you, Nathan.
Yes, you did.
Oh, nice to meet you.
So yeah, right away is not very far off the pavement there. Um, like I said, the knotweed has taken over from the guide rail up to the corner. Um, as you go around the corner headed towards the traffic circle.
Yep.
Um, that landowner has been really protective of his area in years past.
Okay, even the knotweed?
No, the knot, the knotweed doesn't go as far as land, it's right at the edge.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The Resendez family or the one who has the barn, are you speaking of?
I don't know their names.
Okay, the young couple, do you, do you happen to know? Anyway, we, we, depending on who we're talking about, we're, we are familiar with the young couple who owns the land that comes right up next to the. The brush that we're speaking of, the knotweed, um, and they said that, that that wasn't their um property and. That they would be happy if the weeds were cut down as well. They're the young family who has, they have a two-year-old.
Okay.
Yeah, they're walking a lot as well.
Yeah, the, the redeemed there is a town land.
Right. But we're, we're still talking about the right of way and then someone else's private property, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we can't give any, anyone permission to go on someone else's property.
Right. Of course. But the knotweed is on a property with somebody who's willing to have it cut down?
The knotweed's on town property.
Okay, knot, knotweed is town, okay. That's such a pain, you know, if you just cut it and heaved it, then it just spreads.
But I was down there with the grader two weeks ago, I laid it down with a blade.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It, yeah, probably sprains back up in a.
Doesn't take a week or so to grow.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, we didn't notice that.
Yeah, and John also, I think is, we're gonna put a sign up about uh signage for.
She, she does for slow children.
Yeah.
Coming towards that corner from this, from this traffic circle.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
I think you can't, the sign couldn't hurt, but again, my concern with just a sign is that it might not be as effective as increasing the visibility.
Yeah.
There is a lot of children on the Oxbow Pond Road, the other ninety degree corner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the ball field there at the landscape company and your childcare center across the street.
Yeah. Yeah.
Property.
Yeah.
And then you have your beach.
Yeah, with people coming and going, so. And then, John, am I correct, I don't think a mirror is kind of approved for some?
I don't know of any approvals for mirrors. I personally don't much care for them as I explained to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna wash that and.
And then hit, yeah.
It's something else.
Yeah, yeah, I actually had somebody pull out in front of me a week or so ago from Morrow onto Kimble Pond, there's a, a mirror there.
Yeah.
And they were watching the mirror and somehow missed my gigantic black pickup truck.
Yeah.
Well, and if you hit the mirror and it gets a little canted and you think you're safe and then it's in the wrong direction.
Okay.
They're, they're just, they're problematic.
Yeah.
Uh, that I've seen a couple of times there, but.
Uh, dirty, yeah.
Yeah, right now the state is just ignoring that. They took the original one down.
Okay.
Hmm.
I noticed, yeah, actually, that, you know, it seems to have been left alone now, so.
They changed patrolman and he's kinda.
Interesting.
Hmm. So if we lay, if we lay that um knotweed down and just throw a giant tarp over it and hope to kill the knotweed, can we?
I don't know.
Does that help?
I, I think we're in.
Is it tarpable?
Yeah, I think somebody probably steal the tarp.
Yeah, um, I could also ask the conservation commission, cause they were dealing with knotweed, I think down at the Riverland, right, and they had the um.
Um, that was the um.
Bittersweet?
Bittersweet.
That was the bittersweet.
But I think they also have a connection with somebody who deals with knotweed, who was um working with the herbicide to make it.
I think the state has one person.
Yeah. Yeah, and maybe that's the one person.
That does that, and.
Was licensed.
The last time I tried to get them, talked to them, they were. So busy, they would not respond to emails or phone calls or, and I checked into it and, and I was told, well, there's one person in the whole state.
Yeah, that's the guy.
They had to stay in line. Yeah, thank you, yeah. And I do see the mowers are out. State mowers are out, you'll see, they go around it. Yeah, oh, no kidding. Cause they don't wanna spread it. They go, right, they go around it, they don't want to move it.
No, no.
Yeah.
But we can't, you think, I mean, it was a black tarp and it was down on the road with a couple of cinder blocks, that wouldn't deter people?
I don't think that's something we use a time to do though.
On town land?
It wouldn't work, it travels and comes up.
Yeah.
Well, it, it won't kill it, but it'll keep it down enough to make the visibility on that corner better?
But you, you know, it's just you're spreading.
Oh.
Horizon, you travel outside of the tarp area, and now you're places.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's why it's not wise to cut it either?
It's bad. It's bad stuff, except the bees like it, so that's a problem.
Right.
Um, so how do we help visibility on that corner?
Well, I think honestly signage is, is what we can do at this point. I, I don't know of any other solution. We can't do a mirror. And, and it's not effective to cut it or.
There's some trimming in the right of way that I can do that will help some.
Okay.
But um other than laying the knotweed down as it gets up.
Yeah.
In addition to like a roadside type stuff, can we, or can someone put, you know, the little, the bright green ones that stand on the edge that look like little people? With a sign that said like, so, you know, children here, they're, they're, they're like this tall and they're plastic. Can we, you know. Allow one to be put there to, it's, they're more visible than road signs?
Sure, you can do that. Another option is um, the speed limit's thirty miles an hour there. You can reduce the speed limit on that road, this is a town road. You can pu- purchase one of the, your speed is, small signs that are temporary, that attach to utility poles.
Oh. Hmm. Okay.
Um, a lot of towns use those for envo- enforcement and they move them around.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we did look into that a while ago, several years ago at one point uh for Kimble Pond Road, but decided we weren't gonna do that. Um, but that is one of the other, again, you could lower the speed limit. Sharp corner, twenty miles an hour and then one of the flashing signs, your speed is, and if it's still over twenty-five miles an hour, it starts flashing out, so.
Could you asphalt over more of that uh area so that it's pushed back a little farther?
I, I think if you start widening the, the paved portion.
Yeah.
Then you have to maintain that and then it becomes, you know, how far do you go?
Right.
And, and why is the road thirty feet wide here, why isn't it, why is it twenty-five feet here, those types of things.
Can we paint the chevrons? You know, in tight corners, you paint the chevrons on either side?
There are different signage options, yeah. There are different signage options you can do.
And how, do you remember how, I'm sorry.
There is a guardrail im- immediately adjacent to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, yeah.
Another thing that we were reading about as a potential option would be something like a, a speed bump or.
Oh, yeah, that was my next question. What do you do?
I'll, I'll bet that.
Cause that would go.
Do, as far as plowing?
Okay.
Plowing would be enough.
Is the, the plows get caught on it and.
How about just plain old um uh washboarding effect in the spring? That slows people down real, real good.
What, groove the pavement so it rumbles like you do on the highway?
Yeah.
Every time we go by.
Yeah.
Is it paved?
It's a weird problem for the.
But I, I think for now, John's idea of trying to push it back is a really good one. And we'll, we'll signage up, uh, you know, to, to try to slow the traffic down, um.
And Jay, and can we just audit, arbitrarily reduce that speed limit? Can we say that that's our road? Yeah?
Typically you hold a public hearing, but.
Yeah.
And notify. You don't have to notify the butters, but you would, we would probably send letters out to the people on the road, to the, to the property owners on the road.
That's, that's.
On a road like that.
That's easy, that's easy enough for us to do, could, for our next meeting, even?
Sure, we could post it and do that. Um, and I can look into signage options and costs and things and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if, and if um somebody came and put a green children walking sign there, that would be okay by the town?
That's up to you guys, the road agent.
Okay by this person in the town, anybody else? Unless it's a traffic hazard or.
That's what I'm concerned about, is.
I don't know the, I don't, I, I can't visualize the corner enough to know, um, you know, before you come into the curve or something?
I'm, I'm picturing they're out walking, somebody comes speeding down.
Yeah.
Hits the little child sign and counts it into that.
Yeah, that would be bad.
I'd rather they hit the child sign than the.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But as crazy as that sounds, that's a, that could have.
Becomes a distraction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I thought the idea of having the sign, the sign that tells you what your speed limited is would be good, because I think half the time people don't realize that they're moving on a.
They're distracted.
It's a, it's a straight flat road coming into that and people, yeah.
Why don't we look at the cost of one, just again, cause I know it's been a while, and, and we'll investigate that as well, so.
Well, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you taking the time to come.
Do you wear your bright orange when you're walking, your blaze?
I don't, do we have one of those?
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
Yeah, that's really easy, but I.
It's, cause I don't think people realize also um how invisible they are.
Right.
Even if you're on a bright sunny day, if you're up against something, cause even on Hackleboro, it's very hard.
For posting um the hearing, are you, you gotta post it for like, is it a specific section, like what speed do you wanna do?
And that, that's the thing you would, do you decide, is it a specific section of that road or is it the entire road? Where do you want the speed to be?
I like to drive down the road and think about that before I do it, because I, I mean, I drive down there, I've driven down there enough times, but never with that in mind, so.
I think people walk in the whole length, so, you can't in from the circle, not to make it twenty-five all the way.
Yeah.
Alright, and that seems to make sense.
I think that's what I posted now, and I think that makes sense.
The road is.
What's it posted at now, thirty?
Thirty, thirty.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, no, yeah.
That's what most roads are, right.
I guess, okay.
And I, I suspect that people are not all getting thirty miles an hour.
Right, well, they see thirty and they think that means forty, so if you do twenty-five, then maybe that'll.
And you're late for the soccer game.
Right.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Yeah, we really enjoyed living here, we appreciate all your hard work, and thanks for your help, John. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Ready for bed?
Take care.
Okay, Isabella.
You as well.
You're taking the entertainment away. Alright, thank you, stay safe.
Thanks.
Ooh, I need that baby.
Alright, okay. Let's see. Ken, am I correct, the only thing that I see left under new business is the contaminated materials regulation draft from the planning board?
Right.
Yeah.
The land acknowledgement, Cal, you said you hadn't heard from Evan, so we'll just move past that. And then we've just got uh.
Signing, right?
Right, contaminated stuff to sign and then select court representative reports, cause I know you wanna.
I do.
I do have a couple of new business things, so.
You wanna do those now?
Sure, if you want.
Well, do we wanna do contaminated business? I mean, contaminated soils, that's new.
Yeah, do new business first.
Yeah, man, alright, everybody I think has a, someone, someone. As a uh.
Alright, thanks, too.
Good night, guys, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Alright, so this is a uh from the planning board. On uh contaminated materials, including what, what commonly is known as dirty dirt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if either of you guys had time to look at it or. No pun intended, absorb it.
That's very good done up.
Thank you. Thought about it all afternoon.
Um.
The one question from the planning board I know, and you'll see it, I don't know if they highlighted or Cal highlighted, but uh. The page two, section six violation and penalties, um, they kinda left up to us.
Right.
A per day rate, if you will, for violations.
My only concern is the dirty dirt. I'm not pro or anti dirty dirt, but the state regulates it, if the state allows it to be used as a road base. Why wouldn't we allow it to be used as a road base if it's a cheaper alternative for people, especially with the burden of bringing up a class six road? That's very, very expensive, and if you're talking about expanding on town and building out these roads, that might be the only affordable option for somebody who's two thousand feet down one of these. I'm not saying I, I don't, my limited knowledge of it is what I've Googled and gathered over the last year and a half, they've been talking about it.
Hmm.
Hmm.
But I haven't found conclusive evidence to to say it's got long-term impact. It's it's cleaner than probably most dirt that goes into the roads. It's just ugly, cause it's thermally modified.
Hmm.
So I guess like, if this is what the planning board wants, I can support it, but I just don't necessarily think wholeheartedly flagging dirty dirt is necessarily a good or a bad thing.
Right.
I just think it's cost, it's a, it's a cost thing. If, I mean, I know Wyven was the big reason that this came up.
Yeah, I think that started the discussion, so.
Well, because because not only was it, um it was road, okay, and it's approved for road, but it was very specific. It couldn't be within so far of a water source and this, that and the other thing and and that's where I think you get into the issues, especially in Canterbury, there's water everywhere. So if you're going to be putting it in roads, it's always going to be a, an issue for the butters and the conservation commission and anybody else who, you know, okay, it's under a road, but how are they building the road and how close is it really to a water source and?
Which is, which is understandable, but like I said, everything I've gathered from this, there's no evidence that says this material puts out harmful chemi-, you know what I mean? Like.
But then why do they have those restrictions on where you can use it?
Because it's thermally modi-, it's, it's, it's big government. I mean, they.
But that's why people have a concern. If you, if you're gonna put.
Well, so.
So anyway.
Another concern that I have certainly is you're taking contaminated material and you're firmly modifying it with no oversight.
Well, it's all regulated at the plant over in Loudon.
They're self-regulated, so the fox is guarding the hen house, so to speak. Um, they're doing their own testing.
But don't they still have to report? It's all, i- it's like anything else, right? When you report, you have to send in your results and then it gets governed by the state or D E S or.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, but when the representative from the company appeared, I think it was before the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
If I remember, and we asked that question, is who, who regulates you? And he said, well, we do our own testing in-house. And I think you're right, I think they do have to report to the state. But the other concern I have is prior to twenty sixteen, none of us knew about PFAS or PFOs.
Mm-hmm.
What else don't we know about that is potentially in this material that is contaminated? We know it's contaminated, we know where it's coming from. You know, for the most part, it's, it's gas stations that, you know, have had their tanks leak.
Oh, it's leach fields, it's everything else.
Yeah.
Well, and that brings me to um when um this was discussed at the, and this can probably go under my uh uh Boris Lekman's rep section, um when this was talked about at the conservation commission on August fourteenth, they spent a lot of time talking about it and what, you know, this um uh materials that could be considered. And they had a much broader uh class of things that they wanted included, not just septic, septic sludge. Um, this is contaminated materials includes, but it's not limited to septic sludge and thermally treated contaminated soils, and that's it. After the conservation commission looked at it, they added, they wanted it to say septic sludge, thermally treated soil, materials containing petroleum product. I mean, they had a list that they recommended be included in this ordinance. Now, it's not in what we're looking at tonight, so I don't know and um there seems to be a little bit of confusion about, you know, who was on first about that. Did the conservation commission actually pass that information along yet or not?
Yeah.
So, but they were very um concerned after discussion that these materials be included, so I think we can't really make a decision tonight until the planning board is aware of what the conservation, I mean um what's the conservation commission's input is.
Yeah.
And I don't know as they are.
Uh, so that's the first I've heard of that, so I would say, you know, as the selectment rep to the planning board, that probably the planning board is not aware. Um, so.
I'm just curious, like, how do these, cause this is this, this is all birthed from the roads essentially. If, I know this was before I was on the board, but this all came from dirty dirt on Wyven Road, right?
I think that's what started the discussion.
Started, but it was going to come anyway.
Well, I was just, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, in my head, I need to connect the dots, so I'm just wondering like trash, plastic metal, radioactive material, medical waste, where would you, where would you come up with that? Who's gonna, who's gonna truck that into you to your?
We don't know, that's just it. If somebody's buying dirt from somewhere and he's, it's like, you know, putting sludge on your field, you just wanna make sure that that's not in there. So, I don't know.
I know, my only concern with that is like, hey, Scott, I'm gonna come down and I want four loads of loam from your backfield.
Hmm.
You don't know what the hell is in that backfield fifty years ago? It could be a, a trash dump, you know what I mean? I think just by getting over restrictive, instead of casting that broad net, like, I don't hate what the planning board sent, you know, septic sludge and thermally treated, that's a fine, pretty specific-ish, you know, stuff. When you start casting that broader net, I mean, that some of that's.
They have the list that they came up to begin with, like thirty items, and they, and they very specifically said, we don't wanna make it that um specific, so that, but these were big, these were big items and I don't know. Um, and maybe that's worth a conversation for the planning board and the conservation commission to have together so that they can say, why would you use this or whatever?
Cause I'm just trying to figure out, like, what are we, what are we trying to regulate here? Is it for road base? Is it backfill? Is it?
It's not just for, oh, actually, when you're done with that, stop.
Cause I'm just saying, like, when I read the headline of this, contaminated materials regulation, does that mean Canterbury cannot be a, we can't receive needles from diabetic patients at the, like, I guess where does this, I don't know.
This doesn't, this isn't just about roads. Supplement, uh, blah, 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 blah. It doesn't say, you can't store, stockpile or spread. So, I mean, somebody could be having a business where they might generate a whole heap of metal and have it stored on their property and then it's leaching into whatever. They could be storing, who knows? They've got a, a car repair place and they've got crap that they use to clean engines with and they're throwing it behind their, you know, whatever. This is all about, this is not just roads.
So what if you own a house and you've got five cars parked outside that are unregistered, that are in violation of town? Do you have to go regulate what's seeping out of them? Who's gonna go pull the dirt and see if there's petroleum products leaching into the ground?
Well, I'm, I think, I think the town isn't gonna go look, necessarily looking for trouble, but if somebody comes in with a business and says, we have a blah, 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 blah kind of business, and you realize that that kind of business might generate anything in the contaminated list, you would look at it twice and then you would have a reason to say, no. Or you can't do that, or you have to take your whatever, your sludge or your plastic or all your metal shavings and dispose of them properly, just not on your property. But if we don't have this, then you can't say anything.
I was just curious as to what spurred it, like, what, do we, did we have an issue or somebody had four hundred gallons of antifreeze seeping in the, I'm just, I'm just trying to piece together what what started it, where we're going.
We get started with the road, but.
When's the next conservation uh?
It's always the um geez. Third Thursday of the month.
Okay, so that's coming up.
Yes.
So why don't you go back to the conservation commission and have them communicate directly with the planning uh board? Um, what they would like to see included? And and that takes the select board out of being kind of the middleman.
I think they, I think they might have thought that they did and either they didn't or it didn't get to them, so it did, you didn't see it on the planning board, so, okay.
And if the answer is we did, then, then I can ask Brendan, cause actually there's a planning board meeting tomorrow night.
Right.
Um, so I, I don't know, you know, the Riddian Development is appearing again, so we may not have time for much other business than that.
Do you mind if I check? Because I actually asked Brendan if he got a communication.
Right, so why don't we move on?
Okay.
Because the, the hour's getting late.
Okay.
And feel free to check, but um, you know, I, I think we need to move on.
Okay. Okay, so I think, I think from, from my viewpoint, you know, I agree, this is, it started, might have started with Wyven Road, cause they wanted to put the treated soil on it, but this isn't just roads. This is all a Canterbury contaminated stuff, stockpiled or spread or stored or whatever.
I just, I'm not a huge proponent of putting in ordinances that are gonna be excessively hard to regulate, you know, it's, it's kinda like, I don't know.
But I think that's always an issue. I mean, we have a, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, like, look at the signs, for instance, we haven't regulated that and they're clear as day and now you're gonna try to regulate who can store what, where and how, like, that's gonna be extremely difficult to enforce.
I think it'll, it'll, going back and enforcing anybody who's already doing anything in town, I would say yes. But going forward, any business in particular, or again, if you get a complaint, somebody says, my neighbor's.
Typically, that is how it starts, if there's a complaint.
Yeah, so I think if we don't have anything, we can't do anything.
Right.
So, not looking for trouble, I don't know. I'd rather have it than not.
No, I just, I just played worst case scenario in my head, I'm going, how the heck are we gonna, oh, you've got fourteen tractors, how much hydraulic fluid have you leaked in your field? You can't move that dirt now because you've got seven gallons of hydraulic. It's just how petty do you get an enforcement?
Well, the enforcement is the one thing, but if you, again, if you don't have.
I, I, I totally, I see both sides of the coin, I'm just playing doom and gloom.
Thank you.
Alright, why don't we leave that for now and we'll um.
So I'll bring that up to the conservation commission to uh make sure that they've reached out to the planning board and they can figure it out from there. Okay. We'll do.
Uh.
And I just lost my.
I think that's, or no, you had uh.
I had some old business.
What do we, yeah, why don't we go next to that?
Following up on the contaminated material.
That's what I'm.
I have an update on the gas station that is.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, they have ordered the tanks, they received the special exception of areas from the Z B A. They've ordered the tanks, they're looking to begin construction this fall sometime.
Okay. Right, and they assume, I'm assuming, I know the state was where some of the holdup was. Um, nothing from the town, though.
Right, the town, with the town, they're all set.
Yeah.
The state, they had to, they had to order, there was something about the tanks and they ended up.
Right.
Being delayed after they were approved by the Z B A, so they ordered the tanks and they're hoping for fall construction.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, will they be above ground or below ground?
We, we approved them buried.
They were buried, yeah.
Yeah.
Buried. So probably triple wall, I think is the latest.
It is, yeah, it was.
I don't know what the. Yeah, I think it's, it's still triple wall.
Yep. Um, and also an update on the lagoon closing.
Yep.
Um, it's scheduled for one o'clock this Thursday, however.
Oh, boy, okay.
Um. We sent everything off to our attorney to draft the deed. In the purchase and sales, it said the town would provide a warranty deed. And.
Which we can't do.
Attorney reminded us that we can't do because the title is not clear.
Right.
So I got that message at four o'clock this afternoon. Um, I contacted the per, the buyer.
Yep.
I contacted the title company and I contacted the realtor, so they all know. Um, I'm waiting the response tomorrow to determine where to go.
Okay.
Um, if the closing is still on, um, I would ask to be authorized to sign for the town.
Yep.
So if you guys could vote tonight to authorize me to sign for the town with the closing.
Okay.
If it takes place this Thursday, that would be great.
Alright, so I'll make that motion that Ken is authorized by us to sign on behalf of the town at the closing for the property on one oh six.
Sale to Brian Lagoon.
Right.
Uh, yes, I would agree. I second it.
Almost in favor. I?
I.
Okay, alright, and I will, I will keep you updated on if it's gonna take place or not.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I have one more update while we're, if we're still under old business, uh because I did ask today again about um what the scoop was on the gazebo and if anything is happening, but it's.
I forgot.
Then you may finish the update.
We, we got an invoice, we got an invoice for it.
Okay.
So apparently it was done.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, I was like, man, I didn't see anybody.
I didn't go look, yeah, I can't, I can go look, but.
Yeah.
But we did get an invoice, so apparently the work is done.
That was the rock?
The rock, the bottom is, uh, they did it with an architectural kind of epoxy because trying to take everything apart was going to be crazy and the, the posts, the uprights were painted.
Calvin, can you take a look?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look tomorrow.
I looked today. I mean, you can look again, you have a better eye, but it's done.
The check is in the manifest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's our resident expert, so.
They did it, um, I don't know when, because I didn't see anybody there. They did it in the middle of the night or something, but.
Hmm, well, if, if it's done correctly, then we should pay.
But it's done. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so I think somehow we got, we're back to the beginning and we need silence.
Yeah.
Are you in the same favor?
Yeah.
Right, actually, why don't we do this first? We'll really take everything out of order tonight.
Oh, do minutes?
Do minutes.
I already gave Mike.
Cause it's sitting, they're here in front of me.
Uh, I did have a, I did have a question.
And I do see, yeah, some suggestions.
Yeah.
Alright, um, there's several suggestions, four minutes, um, September eighth. Um, the first one worth mentioning is line seventy-two, um, adding or changing it to say recalling the difficulty there was in organizing the two towns to agree on how to just tear down the old bridge. So, just making it a little more clear, I'm seeing odds. The next one is line one oh six, I put a hundred dollars, it should have been a hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
Sure.
Um, line one twenty-three, changing an increase into whether it was time to increase. Um, is it clarity thing?
Okay.
Um, and then line one thirty, changing the keeper, the town's money to responsible for disbursement of town funds and managing investments, which is a much more official thing. Um, that also stressed the changing emotion, but I, uh, we can't change emotion because that's.
Okay.
What did I suggest?
You suggest changing line one fifty-four, Scotland received a plan to invest some of the town's cash in CDs. Um, you had, you had suggested more official language, but that's pretty much what he said.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we can't go back and correct it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
But the gist is there.
Okay.
So that's it.
Alright, I'll make, any, anything else I guess before we, okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Ready? Uh, seconded.
All those in favor?
I.
Alright, so now that brings us to signing some stuff. Alright, first item is an accounts payable manifest in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred, eighty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, huh?
I.
You got the amount?
No, I'm looking for my piece of paper to write on.
You have one.
Uh, pay, yes.
Fifty-one?
Yes.
Three eighty-four?
Yeah.
Twelve cents.
Twelve cents, thank you kindly.
You're welcome.
Did the uh canceled check that was lost get voided? Do we have to void that, void those things?
Um, there I take it.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just thinking about the problems that people have had about checks and having them washed and.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, next is a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred, three dollars and fifty-five cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
I.
Alright.
Is this a normal amount of um intent to cut wood or is it more than normal? Can you say?
It's pretty high.
Yeah, people looking for cash or people getting dead ash trees out?
Oh, I think it's cash, but the market's not, it's not there. It's not a high market for wood right now. It's all sitting on landings and waiting to be processed.
Hmm.
Alright, last item that I have is an intent uh to cut water timber, uh map two two five, lot two. I've got a, a map and, so I'm sure if anybody wants to look at it.
Is it Baptist Hill?
No, uh, Shaker Road.
That's close.
Yeah, not by the.
Everyone's coming there this year, it's those gold trees. You look at the tax maps so much, you figure out where they kinda sit in town by the number.
Right, right.
Lot of stuff tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, looking at the agenda, I knew it was gonna be one of those meetings.
Well, it's just um yeah, between the police and the fire department, I know they've been busy.
They have been busy. Alright, Andrew, can we do uh treaty power for just a minute? So my unitil, the electric delivery portion, took a real big jump between the last bill and this bill. How does that happen? The, in other words, the kilowatt per hour charge went, went up from like, I can't remember, six to like thirteen cents or something?
Yeah, yeah.
How does that happen?
Because the rate didn't take effect until the first of August.
Okay.
So depending on your billing situation, you might have uh some days on the old rate, come on to the new rate
Yeah.
and then there should be a split in your bill, but it should even.
But we didn't know pay thirteen cents a kilowatt hour, right? Didn't we?
For unitil? Yeah, it, this was the first time.
It's, that's what the rate was.
It, this was the first time, I believe all of them were in the thirteen range.
Not the board, I guess it, yeah.
This was the first time that it was individually done for the um.
Unitil versus.
Utility and services.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because of what was happening before, doing a blanket, you had an U N S in the.
Yeah, I was actually surprised that nobody else seemed to say anything, so.
Well, it, it was because of the I don't know, the cost of power that is happening right now with uh data centers consuming in the market.
Yeah.
I mean, increases the price because data centers are
Yeah.
taking up so much.
Yeah. Alright, I, my wife actually noticed and, and said I had to bring it up tonight.
Yeah. No, that was, that was the rate and the, uh, the, you know, the rate between Eversource and Unitile were slightly different, one was a little bit higher. That was, that amount difference was incremental, but going up to that rate was, it was a pretty good jump.
There's a new head of the PUC, so I'm sure it'll get better.
Right, exactly. Alright, anything else for anybody?
Our, uh, our reports.
Oh, that's right.
Darn, I was hoping you were gonna forget.
Alright, so for, I'll start off, um, the. Planning board, uh, as I, I mentioned earlier, Meridian is airing again tomorrow night. And is the, I believe the only thing on the topic tomorrow night. Um, so certainly more to follow on that. The, um.
Can I give you some information on that? So, um. They had asked about the engineering.
Yeah.
And we established a, uh, escrow account.
Yeah.
We asked them to send us a check.
Yeah.
Cause we got estimates for engineering.
Yeah.
We had not received the check. Uh, the land use administrator contacted them, went back and forth. They brought in a check that had been written to. Directly to the engineer instead of to the town.
Oh.
Interesting.
So. We contacted the engineering firm, we contacted Meridian. I, I don't know, and, and obviously, uh, I, I don't know what the engineering firm did, if they did anything. Um, I don't know how that's gonna play out tomorrow night.
Okay.
That was a mistake on Meridian's part. I was a little shocked that that's what happened. But there is no engineer's report for tomorrow night.
Okay.
So.
Maybe interesting short meeting.
Maybe.
Don't forget, you've gotta show up at five thirty for.
Correct, for this, right, for the, uh, listening session. Listening session.
Are we, are we supposed to be there for that too?
You, um, I would say traditionally select board members have been there.
Let me take that back. Are we going to be participating or spectating in this? Which hat are we putting on for this one?
I don't think it's necessary, I mean, the, the ones that I've been at. As a selectman, I have participated because there were questions directed at me.
Okay.
But I've kind of let them run their own, it's a planning board.
Right, I just didn't know if I have to brush up on, people are gonna try to talk, or I can just sit back and enjoy the meeting?
Especially with, um, the development, there may be direct questions for the selectmen, it would not surprise me.
Okay.
Yeah. I have an assignment, so I won't be, typically as a selectman, um, I bounce between.
Yeah, I remember that during the plan for tomorrow, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have a, a certain, the listening stay, would the, where did they have, five different posts or something?
Three, if I remember.
Three, okay.
I just wasn't sure if we would just sort of, where you're at one, Beth goes to a different one, I go to a different one, so we can kind of hear what's going on.
Well, I'll be walking around, but I would have thought if the planning board wanted us to weigh in, they would have invited us to, but we weren't.
Like for, for our, uh, knowledge, do we just wanna sit at one and bring it back and talk about it later, or just bounce around and absorb it all?
I think it, it always helps to listen. I don't, I, I think that that's always a valuable.
Give it up when we get there.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure if I'm bringing a notebook or, you know.
Do they, are they taking minutes of the listening sessions?
Well, I would call them more notes than, than minutes, cause obviously.
You can't.
We can't, yeah, we can't be in three places.
I didn't know whoever was.
Or can you?
I wasn't sure.
Well, as long as everybody stays in their corners, then it's not a quorum, so.
Right.
Until everybody comes back together at six o'clock, then I don't need to. Strictly be minute.
Yeah.
Minuting.
Well, I was just wondering if who's ever doing each, one of the listening stations is keeping a track of what people are asking and how they answered it and. You know, who showed up or whatever.
They did ask.
The, the question, who were they asking would be important to know.
They did the last time, I don't know that they got as detailed as who's asking the questions.
Okay.
Um, just that the question was asked.
The question, the questions are good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I would expect that'll go that way tomorrow night as well. And, uh, you and I had already spoken about the, um, I missed the last tricentennial committee meeting, so. When, when it's your time, if you would speak on that, I would appreciate it. And planning board wise, the only other thing is, we still continue to labor on the, uh, master plan. Solid waste, um, everyone was going to take time and read the areas engineering report. And that is not on the agenda for tomorrow night, it's gonna be on the agenda for the next meeting after.
And that is?
Twenty.
It would be October.
Oh, it's October.
Yeah, I think that would put us into October.
Seventh, eighth?
Seventh is, um, energy, why do I have an energy workshop there? No, that's not it.
Be the fourteen.
Fourteen, planning board at seven P M, okay, so that'll be chapter nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the intent is, um, that we finish that night. We're, you know, probably two-thirds of the way through. Everybody's assignment was to read the areas engineering report and be ready to, to discuss what's left.
That'll never be finished that night, I can't see it, if everybody's gonna weigh in, it's gotta be, the second half of it's gotta be basically rewritten. We still don't actually even know what we're, what we know of the report, but not how the planning board. Might use it, or what we might do. I guess there's still a lot to be said.
Definitely.
Okay. Okay, so Thursday, third Thursday, what month? Oh, that's. Why is it tricee on the sixteenth? Anyway. Have to organize October.
Alright, Beth, why don't you go next?
Um, conservation commission, I didn't miss the last meeting. But, um, they're still dealing with, um, working on their bylaws, they're not calling them bylaws, it's really their procedures. They're making sure that they've got all their paperwork. They did have, they did come, I think, to planning board when you were talking about wetlands buffers, so they've, you know, contin- continued to discuss that. Various projects as far as mowing and, uh, doing rocks and, you know, their various trail upkeep. Um, are continuing, they did get the bridge built over the Kimball Pond, still, still away. So that's all completed, so if you happen to be down there and wanna see it. And I don't think, um, I know the last time I was here, we asked about, um, somehow. Making it, uh, some sort of barrier so that trucks couldn't drive on the dam.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the bridge is actually enough of a deterrent itself. I'm, I'm not exactly sure where people were driving, that they didn't want them to drive in relationship to where the bridges.
Before the culvert came out, you could sneak a Jeep or something through there.
Okay, so, um.
That bridge probably will deter them.
Okay, so I will, I will double check that, does bridge deter?
Weren't they gonna contact the fire department to pass them for access?
Yeah.
See what they, and then determine what they're gonna do.
I think I will double check when I check about the ordinance, um, issue about, if they, if they followed through on that.
And I reached out to Ken Stern last week, I got a call from a resident, the backside of the Kimball Pond. Conservation land, somebody's posted no hunting, safety zone signs.
Oh.
And I don't think you can do that without town approval as it's town land. And when I spoke with Ken, uh, Stern, he said he was not aware of any. Any postings that were supposed to go up. So I, I have pictures of the, the stuff, I mean, they're everywhere, they're postcards. On a, pretty much the trail that goes in the backside that way.
With a, who put them up?
Don't know.
Okay.
So I just wanted, I don't know if they'll address that or not, or, cause it is hunting season. I don't know if it's a deterrent to keep people out of there, but under, if you look at all the setbacks, you know, there's no houses in three hundred feet of anywhere in there, so it's all legal. I just wasn't sure if, if Ken.
I'll bring, I'll bring that up to, um, I'll send a, a note to, um, Kelly and Ken to get that on the agenda with these things.
Yeah, he said he would check it out.
Yeah, okay. Um, C C P C, we canceled our meeting, and thank you for your patience Edgar. Um, because really the only update we had was Edgar's about, um, getting, uh, the adder funds transferred into the town's accounts. Um, there was really nothing else, uh, Beth McGuinn was not available, I don't think you, either one of you have been to any more. Meetings, to, so there was nothing else to report. Other than Edgar's admirable perseverance to get the money for the town.
Yeah.
So, uh, that was C P, C C P C, energy. Um, again, I was, they had a meeting on the same night that we had our board selection meeting, so I did not attend. But they, that was mostly to, uh, discuss the organization of the, um. Panel discussion on electric vehicles and the electric car petting zoo, both of which they considered were very successful.
Good.
They had, um, a, a good amount of traffic, they had a lot of good, I went to a little bit of the panel discussion. Um, most of the people there already had electric vehicles.
They look crowded though.
There were like twenty people.
Yeah.
I think there were two people there that did not have electric vehicles. But they had a very good discussion among themselves about many things. And, um, some people were, wanted to upgrade, so that was a good thing, and I think, um, they'll wanna pursue that in, those kind of. Um, events in the future, so they, they had a good, they had a good talk. Um, and they seem to be, you know, working through their projects, and they're still very, um. They've got a lot of people signed up for the window dressers event. And they've been at the farmer's market every week getting people, they've got a lot. Yeah, so, energy committee seems to be, uh, full of energy and doing things. Um, and then we did have, um, the one notification that came in through the Soul Smart. Uh, group from, and Clean New Hampshire that wanted to mention Canterbury and, you know, um, Ruth Heath and. I think Beth has been going and Fred to the Soul Smart things, uh, and getting a Soul Smart designation for the town. They wanted to mention it at their convention and we said yes. Great, let us, let people know we're doing good stuff.
Yeah.
So I, I should have more to, um, relate, uh, next month on all these, but. Again, one meeting was canceled and one meeting was rescheduled when I couldn't go and one meeting I missed. But, um, there, the C C C is on top of all their projects. Uh, tricentennial, um. I'm not sure what to report on tricentennial, there's still a lot more of organizing that needs to be done. Um, the, the treasurer has done a very good job of getting the books all organized. Um, they've got a lot of projects coming in, and I think what they're trying to do now is figure out how to. They really wanna start fundraising and don't quite know how to get that really jump started, so they can start getting funds to start. Um, funding all the other projects they wanna do.
Yeah.
Um, it's still, it seems, it feels very much like who's on first with a lot of the committees, so they've got a, a nice worksheet. That they're going to be passing out to everybody who might wanna do anything, just so they can start coming up with a budget. That's their, their next big task is coming up with a budget, and then, um, they'll probably be coming to the town at some point to say.
Did they schedule their next meeting?
I have it as, um. October sixteenth.
Cal, are you aware of that? Is a better request that's come through?
But. Is, is this?
I haven't gotten it.
Okay.
Alright, um, let me just check and see also when, um. The next conservation, conservation is the third Thursday of the month, isn't it? Yeah, so I don't know why, I didn't have it written in October when they made that, but.
So same night?
Yeah.
Seven P M?
Yes.
I've got the conservation commission is.
The ninth? Okay, that's been, that makes more sense, second Thursday, okay.
The only thing on the sixteenth is a library presentation in the town hall, so it is available.
Yeah, yeah, could, if you, can you, yeah, thank you. That'll take care of that, cause typically I send, as you know, I send the emails, but I wasn't, wasn't at the last.
I hadn't gone through yet to put all my.
Yeah.
Regular monthly meetings in here, okay.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it. Um, there, but they wanna start, um, you know, again, they wanna maybe start selling T-shirts.
Right, actually, you, you and I, since it's not town business, you and I can talk maybe for a couple minutes.
Yeah, yeah, about the, the, the.
I've got some, some ideas.
Yes. But they're, they're very excited, oh, and just so everybody knows, New Year's Eve, I've taken it upon myself, New Year's Eve. Of twenty twenty-six into twenty twenty-seven, we are going to have a kickoff in the center. For the tricentennial year, nobody else wants to do this except me and Teresa Wyman, and we're gonna do it.
Okay.
So anybody else who wants to come, ring bells in the center. Twenty twenty-six, December thirty-first, you're gonna be there.
I'll be asleep.
You're coming.
Calvin and I stood out in a blizzard for, what was that, sixteen hours?
Too many hours.
Yeah, okay, I think that's it.
Uh, rep committee, they have eighty-nine kids playing soccer, they got fifteen volunteer coaches. Um, October twenty-fifth is the town Halloween.
Yeah.
So as always, they would love volunteers to set up and tear down. That's going all, um, normal. Uh, H D C did not meet this month because they couldn't get a quorum. Which Kevin said they now are looking for a new member.
Could you back up a second, when is Halloween?
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, yes, Halloween in the center, got it.
Yep, I believe it's the day after trick-or-treating at the golf course. Don't quote me on that.
And then there's also trunk-or-treat, which is.
The sixteenth at C E S.
Yes.
Cause I got that email twelve times today.
Yes.
So H D C didn't meet, but they're getting a new member, uh, next go-round. And ag committee, we met. The day after our last cycle update, wasn't much, um, they, we reappointed the members that were up. Went over tricentennial ideas, plans, the trees, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Um, and then they are going to meet. October twenty-third is their next scheduled meeting.
Okay.
I won't be here, so if somebody wants to go, you're more than welcome to.
That's ag?
Yes.
Oh, good meeting again.
Do we do that?
I mean, I don't think they're really going over much other than their farm update.
Well, um, they may wanna reconsider that because that's a night of the Canterbury Tales event in the center. I think it's Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so, um, I'm going to be acting.
Gotcha.
So I cannot attend if it's that night. Unless they wanna come hear me is.
I think I have to go for administrative stuff, um, especially that deadline for.
Yeah.
So, um, just tell you.
Sounds good, yeah, thank you, Cal. Um, okay.
And that's it?
That's it?
I could load.
No, I think I felt light this week, it's, I don't have a wedding cake to bake next month, so I could be a lot more, uh, attentive.
Alright. Good.
One thing on the check from C C P.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We were notified by D R A today that we have to have a warrant article to accept that amount.
An official warrant article from town meeting warrant article?
So by the time town meeting rolls around, it's a standing check.
We will put the check in the general account.
Yeah.
And after town meeting and the warrant article passes.
Yeah.
We'll move that money to the cap reserve.
Very good, okay.
And is it, is that?
We will not be able to use it until then.
Okay, so, and that will happen every year, or whenever we have an adder?
Whenever we get a check from the.
Yeah.
Similar to the Sam Lake house, Sam Lake trust deposit.
Yeah.
Okay. You can't do it ahead of time and say like one warrant article to say whenever we have an adder fund?
We have to do the Sam Lake one every year.
Yeah.
Um, update on that from D R A, that letter. They changed their mind, in nineteen ninety-eight, the select board was given authority to do whatever they want with trusts, so.
Okay.
They've changed their mind again on that, so we don't, we don't have to have that one every year.
Let's see, the email that I got was at, the first one was at eleven o'clock or something, when we got a reply from D R A.
Yeah.
And you got the reply, so then they send you another, you know, afterwards?
Uh, yeah, it was, I, I was going back and forth with Cap all day, hearing about several things, so.
Well, everything I just said.
No, I mean, that part's still true, like the, the C C P C board, that's true, it's the same.
Same like trust, you know.
That's, that's.
Oh, okay. So do we need to do like a blanket? Next time then?
Next time, maybe we can use the same wording, to like, give this, like, minimum authority. For the next year to accept up to a certain amount.
Right, okay.
No, it's probably wouldn't, for, for, um, C C P C, it wouldn't be. That necessary because I'm not sure if anybody is going to be opting up to the adder, if their rates are, are really so high. And the adder, the only, the only, um, level that we still have with the adder is more expensive than one we already have.
And typically what we've done with the adder is if we could. Put it on without making it the same or more than.
Right.
You know, then, then we would do it, but. We did it once, it's my memory, right, one six-month period and that was it, so unfortunately that.[1784.01]
Did they, was there any more conversation that you had with, um, trying to have the adder available for all the levels above, or hasn't that conversation happened yet?
No, no, they haven't, um. No, they haven't even conversed about that, but I was gonna ask about the warrant. Do you have to state that amount of the warrant?
Um, you have to say an amount, so for the Sam Lake House Trust Fund, we were allowed to say up to a certain amount. So, um, for this coming warrant, we at least need to say the fifty-two hundred, um, that's in the check, but we can also say. We could also say up to ten thousand, and then if we get more next year, then we could, then we could do it, but we can't, we can't put it in the general fund and like earmark it.
Right, yeah.
You can't put it into the C R F yet.
Yeah, you just can't, you can't use it if it's in the general fund, tell it, or it's into the cap reserve account.
No, but.
Right, right.
But what I was getting to was, um. For us not to say fifty-two hundred again, up to fifty-two hundred, making people think that we're spitting fifty-two hundred and.
Oh.
When it's only gonna be probably around a hundred.
I gotcha.
Yeah, a hundred.
Yeah.
We'll have to, Calvin, can you put that in our notes that we can explain that at the town meeting?
When the warrant article comes up at town meeting, you'll have to explain that.
Yeah. I'll take that, I'll take that one.
Yeah, actually. Don't, don't get people hoping that.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, glad you thought of that. That's, that's a very good point.
I'll just turn to you on, at town meeting and say, Edgar, please explain.
Calvin?
Paul, this is completely tangential from power, so sorry. When Paul was here earlier, he had a complaint about noise ordinance regarding the starting of logging operations. The past couple days, the loggers have been starting about six A M, and he was wondering how it could be enforced, or is it enforceable, and how to go about that.
Okay. I, so logging is, that's what I was just gonna say, I was at the, the meeting, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause of heat generally, right?
No, I.
No, equipment startup, yeah, it takes a bit to get them ripping.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, they need to get well warmed up.
When, when the noise ordinance came up at town meeting, it was really specifically, uh, beca- generated because of the logging operation that was going on. And they were starting at four o'clock in the morning.
Oh, geez.
And, um. Jim Miller, myself, and a couple others, like, okay, cause it was down on Welch Road, and you're like, okay, that's just too early, four o'clock in the morning, come on.
Yeah.
And, uh, but at town meeting, it was, it was, uh, amended to, to not have logging included in that. I'm surprised they're allowed to log with the burn note, like the burn ban statewide, and because the sparks friction, I mean, you could tee off some serious tinder right now.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could.
You know, a hot chainsaw could do it.
Couldn't, yeah.
You know, not that I, I just, Paul Aston, I did, he gets very.
Yeah, it's very dry right now, so.
Yeah, we need to amend the sign up the fire station from very high to like, really don't even think about it.
Yeah, right, we're not even kidding, so.
Oh, yeah, I've gotta take my sign for the store.
Yeah, yeah.
Better hand painted.
Yeah.
Anything else? Otherwise, Calvin, motion to adjourn?
Oh, I don't wanna make a motion.
Come on, this is your chance.
Alright, I, I make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye, that was so hard.
Alright.
Knew I'd get one out of you.
I was doing, I was trying so hard to.
So hard.
I knew you wanted to go home.
I wanna be in the mix.